At six o'clock, I'm going to call an emergency meeting in the Joshua City Council, Council Chambers, Joshua City Hall, located 101 South Plains, Joshua, Texas. This meeting of the city council is called pursuant to an emergency or urgent public necessity, specifically the coronavirus disease, COVID-19, in accordance with section 551.045 of the Texas Government Code. City facilities are closed to the public in response to a health emergency, specifically the coronavirus. The meeting is available via live stream through Zoom. I am going to call this meeting the order. We do have a forum present. What we're going to do is discuss and consider an ordinance of the city council of the city of Joshua, Texas, declaring the local state a disaster due to a public health emergency. I guess when I first called the whole this morning, Burleson had moved to there, basically stay in place last night at their meeting. I put in a call to Scott Kane, Mayor of Cleveland, just to see what they were doing. Talked to Josh about whether we could make a declaration today, if you'd have a meeting for whatever. Probably gone back and forth a few times, decided which way to go. It's been very interesting with attorneys. Depending on which attorney you talk to, sort of get a little different answer. I think we've got best in Terry, but it's a little bit confusing because most of the day, after talking with Scott Kane, I really liked the way that Cleveland did it. But our attorney's of the opinion that there may be some issues with that. And then we've got Burleson that went to their stay at home. And he's even said, yeah, they may be in good shape, but the way the judge's order reads. And I always thought that it was, you know, if you had the government and then the state could be more restricted, and then you had the county, they could be more restricted than the state. And then it got to the city, and as long as we were more restricted, we couldn't be less restricted. Well, evidently that applies in some things, but it doesn't apply in a disaster declaration. And Josh, I misquoted something, but he knows. There's certain other rules that apply that the county judge is basically the leader in that particular case. And in the declaration that he put out, I think there's several attorneys that think that those need to be clarified. Because there's some issues either way that you go may or may not be not be not in accordance with what the judge's order was. So having gone through all of that today, a last bit of information, I didn't find out until about the last hour or so. So really, it was a little bit too late to get to everybody. But I think what we ought to do tonight is a couple of terms and things that everybody's saying is basically the, what is it, stay at home or locked in place?
Shelter.
Shelter in place, which is, you know, getting pretty restrictive. Cleveland's deal was, hey, go to work, go alone. You know, that was basically it. So one of the things we need to decide is whether or not we want to do the stay at home type deal. We may or may not be able to do that and do some other things with the businesses according to the attorney. He thinks that Burleson's interpretation would probably work in the absence of any of this would ever go to. In other words, whatever we decide is probably not going to ever go to. So I thought maybe what we could do tonight is I looked up all the different declarations, and they're all different. Get those out to everybody at once. We come to a consensus that we want to have it where we're locked in place, or we want to still give people some flexibility. Sort of pros and cons, we can sort of go around the room with that. It does, you know, keep the things from spreading. The other thing that is, you want to take your kids and just take them out for a ride in your car, you basically can't do that. Now, that's taken in literal, but that's sort of the thing of these kind of laws, what I've seen on Facebook. Facebook, they want to get direction from us. They want somebody to tell them what they need to do. And that's, that's good. The problem is you got Burleson is sort of telling one thing, this means this. You got Cleveland saying one thing, and it means this. Hopefully, it'd be in there, possibly be something different. But to me, you know, stay at home for two weeks, true, it'd be nice just to, if you wanted to drive down to Big Ben. Well, according to that, you're not authorized, you can't do that. Again, that's taken in literal, but I think you're going to have approval of people that they're going to be very little. If you say you can't leave your house, they're not going to leave your house unless it's, you know, to go to one of these essential things. So I think we have to be very careful. Some of the things that I read going through all these different ones are essential services, you know, are essential businesses. Burleson put theirs in place, and I watched their entire meeting last night. And it sounds like it's very restrictive, you know, you can only do this, this, and this. Well, by the time it was all over, you could call Best Buy and say, hey, I want to buy a new TV and do this. Do the deal over the phone, go to Best Buy, pick up the new TV. That starts getting pretty great, I think. They even guided where if you were a hairdresser and you wanted to go to the person's house, as long as they were a senior, they didn't find one senior. That was okay. Well, those are almost in contradiction to what the governor's put out, what the judge put out. So, and that seems to be what I see the most comments on Facebook are, is I don't understand it. What does this mean? And to me, that's the question. We ought to have something that's pretty clear. Like I said, I had about three or four conversations with Scott Kane today. Personally, I like his, it's very clear. He says, here's the business, based on what the governor said and everything, have to use the business and close. Everything else, you go out and, you know, you do your thing, but you only have 10 people in your store. Whatever it's time, you have to do social distancing. And when the job's over, you go home, spend time with your family. Excellent time to have family and do that, but you're not, you know, you want to go to Big Ben, I guess you could do that. But he's not really shutting down any business. But then we get to what's an essential business. When I read the definitions, and then you drive through the city of Joshua, probably 95% of our businesses hit essential business. All the Dollar Trees, Dollar Dent, those are all considered essential because they sell diapers and things that families need. You have the gas stations with convenience stores, same thing, those are all that. You got insurance agents, those are all about. You got banks, those are all about. You got plumbers, electricians, those are all essential services. You got car plate, you got oil change places, those are essential. You got a used car lot, that's essential. So if you go through our city, about the only thing I could come up with that wasn't essential businesses is maybe the vapor shops and the antique store. I could really come up with it. So, you know, whatever we do is maybe not going to hit that many businesses if we take the same essential services that other people have. You know, it's not distribution, manufacturing. Again, these places still have to do the, you know, no more than 10 people in a group and practice social distancing and everything. So I just understood, and talking with Scott Kane, I had a conversation right before it came in. His staff has been working with the judge. And, you know, he thinks whatever the counties actually have another meeting in the morning. They're going to come up with a new. It's possible it may look very similar to Cleveland's. It may look, you know, completely different. So I thought maybe what we ought to do tonight is, is sort of come up with, if we want to do a lock-in place, if that's the way we want to go. And according to Terry, if I'm understanding correctly, if you do go to lock-in place, then that's the way we can go and say, your businesses, these ones that are open, these ones that are closed. He seems to feel like if you go the Cleveland way, you can't really state that because then you're not. It's like if you go to the lock-in place, there's other things that you can do now. But if you don't go to lock-in place, you can't do those things. So it's, and again, I just got some of this information.
Yeah, just on this, Joe's right, sending emails right into the deadlock in one hour. In a nutshell, Terry and I both have this opinion that, I think was before the council, the American, you went through to talk about this afternoon, was you can, the council under adopts a shelter in place ordinance, or there's really nothing else we can adopt that's not already covered by the county and state declarations. Kind of in a nutshell, for Terry, and I agree, we're caring how it is on that. So that's really, Joe's the question before us, is if we do a shelter in place, will we just survive by the county and state declarations as they continue to give them that? But like you said, the problem is, at least at the county level, it's going to be changing in about three or four days. And of course, people are calling us on what to do if you get your directive to the county, so.
And there's this little deal where hopefully tomorrow it will be cleared up if there's some definite discrepancies. Like in one paragraph, it says, you know, the restaurants have to do takeout. But in the very next paragraph, it says that was one of the deals that was in exception. Another thing was, it says avoid nail salons. Well, we called up and one interpretation was that the only people that would get the pass is if you walk the nail salon, because he opened, but if you walk in, you get the ticket, you get the $1,000 pass, nail salon. Then we heard from Phil Moore, and again, different interpretations, says, no, that thing says you close, but you got to check with the judge first. And the judge was of the opinion that, you know, it's whoever walks into that particular store is the one that gets the ticket, not the store owner. So hopefully, some of these things will be cleared up and there are regulations tomorrow. But what we need to decide, and like I said, it may be, we don't decide anything tonight, or we don't put anything or act on anything tonight. We may just decide, okay, if the judge doesn't come up with a lock-in place, and that's what we want to do, then we can give Josh the directions, say, okay, here's what is what ours to say. And immediately after the judge's deal, we can either have a meeting or a smaller preview, and I can sign the document, and we'll go to a lock-in place, if that's what everybody wants. What the judge comes out with, and we say, okay, tonight, well, we don't even want to go to a lock-in place. We'd like to see these things. And if those are in the judge's plan tomorrow, then we continue to stay under Johnson County. So I'd like to just hear what everybody else thinks. We're a go at it. Unless you strike down with the judge.
I oppose all this emergency declaration stuff. Benjamin Franklin said a long time ago, you know, people that are willing to give up their rights for temporary safety deserve neither. We have orders in place already that I don't have a voice in other than calling my elected officials and telling them what idiots I think they're being. You've got a disease out there that has a 3.4% mortality rate, all right? WHO doesn't even consider it an epidemic by their own, by their own standard. It's a pandemic because it's on so many different continents or in so many countries. It's a definition thing. The influenza flu, last year, the mortality rate of it was 7.1% worldwide, double what this virus is. We didn't see any major reaction to closing businesses and so on and so on. We saw pockets of it close. We saw schools close because they had so many kids out sick and to get it back under control. Business by business make those decisions, not the government making the business, the decisions for everybody. I just, I oppose it all. The lock-in place or the shelter in place, whatever you want to call it. But you can go to these places. All we're doing is we're funneling everybody into certain places because everybody wants to get out of the house. And you're funneling people who might have the virus that we don't know for sure how it's transmitted, how long it can last on things, so on and so forth, by the CDC's own admission. We're funneling them into one place, and suddenly, these rates are starting to climb. Well, again, number one, we're finally getting test results in that we hadn't been getting. Number two, we're not being told how many people are being tested and are being tested negative. All we're hearing is the positive. We're not hearing about how many people are surviving this. All we hear every day on the news is how many die. You know, we're getting one side of the story, and we are, we are reacting. We are not responding to something. We are reacting. And I don't like reaction. We need to respond. We need to go small. The county, yes, they need to clear, clean up what they've got, no question about it. The governor needs to clear up what he's got. And it needs to be uniform across the state, not hodgepodge here, there, yonder, and yong. I'd much rather see a county-wide response than a city-by-city response because that's how we get the hodgepodge. Well, I live in Joshua, but I work in Burleson. Burleson says shelter in place. Joshua says it's okay. What do I do?
That's the question right there. We're sort of neat in that we're completely surrounded by Burleson and Cleveland. So even when I had my message the other day, that was it. We sort of need to do what they're going to do just to make it clear. And unfortunately, Burleson's take an approach, Cleveland's take a completely different approach. So it's still, whatever we end up doing is going to be different than what.
And the majority of our residents that have jobs can meet. We have very few actual in-town businesses. You know, the only thing that we have in town are the grocery stores, the convenience stores, the places that are the essential businesses. I think sitting and waiting until a county makes a decision, and hopefully, the governor's going to say, look, you know, we do need to have a statewide result or program. But he doesn't want to do that because there's so many areas of this state that aren't effective at all. So, you know, we're reacting to numbers that we're being fed every day. And I just don't think our reaction is right. And I think we need to sit back and come up with a good response as opposed to react. That's my opinion.
A couple of things I hear from you, Scott. You know, you have to go back, just, you know, to go back a week, you look at where Burleson's at. Why did Burleson have to go and make the war? Well, because a large portion of their city is in Tarrant County. So they can't have a county mandate, which the county cleared out there first, and then three quarters of their city not have to hold to it. That's why Burleson had to react, and they had to act on it. Okay, why Cleveland did, well, the next largest city in the county looking at it is, hey, with the proximity of Burleson, they're looking at that as being a challenge as well. That's why they acted, not the exact same way they acted. So yes, we are in a position that we're in between them. And no action or waiting on the county to take action, I don't know if it's maybe 100% effective. Some of the ideas and thinking that, you know, when you're spouting about the flu as opposed to coronavirus and the death counts and all that, well, I'm one of the reasons I believe and understand that, hey, it could be much worse right now if we haven't been taking these precautions over the last month. If these things didn't start coming down, if we never banned, you know.
Forty minutes.
Well, the forty minutes, but the coming from China was the first thing that got locked up. And we were one of the first ones to jump on that, and it kind of started tightening, you know, all throughout. So I think that it doesn't seem as bad as it is. But yes, you're right, there's not enough testing. How many more have died that we don't know died from the coronavirus? How many more have it that don't have, that don't know? And so it goes both ways there that, you know. It's one of those things that I think the stay-in-place order, you know, I like. I saw Burleson's, I like some of that. I like some of the stuff from Cleveland, and I think there's a good medium to kind of look at. Yes, it's not going to have a major impact. We're an eight-square-mile city and 6,000 residents and in some areas, we're not a major player. But I think what's going to be important is that they look at what we're able to come up with tonight for tomorrow, you know, that the county will be looking at and seeing what their cities are all doing. Because the county's going to act. They're going to go build some more businesses. The metroplex is too big to take out, look at that. So I think we need to look at, you know, I said, I like some of the stuff that I saw on Burleson's and, you know, some of the stuff in Cleveland. I kind of got a little bit obsessed with what you were thinking, Joe. I thought Burleson's was actually a little bit more open than some Cleveland's and such. But I think we need to look at, you know, spend a few minutes here this evening looking and saying, hey, this is where we can see it. Because in the end, if the county comes up with something, that's going to be the next, you know, direction to go. And I don't think we're going to be any more restrictive than the county. But I think no action is just, that's the easy way. The idea that it's government intervening in people's rights, I get it, I'm right here, I hear you. But at the end of the day, somebody's got to help ourselves from ourselves, you know. And that's kind of where that, what I look at it as.
And one point I just want to throw out too, that the other cities have, the county area, they have medical directors. Burleson has a medical director, Cleveland has one, the county has one, the state. We don't have one. So, I mean, we can all talk about statistics and the numbers and everything, and I'm not saying any of y'all are wrong, but we don't know, we don't have that expert in here, and I don't think any of us are goers or hands that we're the expert on this part. You know, we have to rely on what, you know, the county, the other cities, what the county and what the state. So, you know, I think we need to decide what we want to do. I don't think we can say, we're doing this because this particular region, we can't tie it to the numbers. You know, we have to do it because we think this is what's right for the city, based on the information that we're seeing coming from the governor and those. Problem.
I read a statement that said, we'll never know if we have overreacted, but we will certainly know if we have underreacted. I think the stay-in-place orders are kind of the next, ultimate last step that you would want to take. I mean, that's pretty serious when you start saying one person into a store, one person into the grocery store. I went to a grocery store today, a lady came in with four little kids. You know, how is she going to go shopping if she doesn't have a way to take care of the kids, you know? I think that would be kind of the last resort for the ultimate resolution, is a stay-in-place, a sheltered place. I think we are ready for a next step. But I want to wait and see what the county comes up with so that we're not in here in two or three days saying, well, this part of it didn't, didn't up to the county standards, and this part is covered, and this part is all worked up to county yet. I think we can, I think we may be Monday too early to plan this.
Well, I said, I, when I called this deal out, you know, Burleson did it, and I hoped that was what Cleveland was getting ready to do. And then they sort of said, no, that wasn't what they were doing. They were taking this other approach. And so, you know, just as the day went along, trying to read this stuff. So, yeah, I agree with it. If I would have known everything this morning than I know exactly, I would have probably said rest weight.
Well, one of the other questions that I have is was basically no hospital was in Johnson County.
Or you have the walls?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you don't hear a lot from walls. They actually had a report from Hubley on, in Burleson's website last, or at their meeting. And they said that Hubley actually was putting in the changes in place to where they were, they cut out all the length surgery, which opened up, I believe, a wing. Whenever they remodeled the hospital, they actually had the whole wing was still open there, and they hadn't demoed it or done anything. So that was open. So I think they said they were actually going, what, let me say 200 and something beds to 300 and something.
Whatever you name is. Are those numbers being reported in Tarrant County, even though they're Johnson County people?
Well, Hubley's actually in Tarrant County.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Because Tarrant County has a whole lot, right? There are a large number. Are Johnson County people that are going to John Peter Smith or Hubley or one of these other hospitals, are they being counted in Tarrant County, or are they in Johnson County, and they're all?
Now, I think that that question came up last night too. If you, whatever city you're from, your home in place, that's where you get counted. And right now, Johnson County has three confirmed, I think confirmed, are all pretty much the northeast side of the county, you know, the Burleson Rinden, out that direction. There's two, yeah, there's two that are pending that are waiting on the results. That I think were in the Burleson area, but they had not got the results to confirm with them. And that's all that's been adjusted.
And I saw today, there's five Indian cases in Johnson County. So just waiting test results.
Well, I'm with you there also, but I think if we don't do anything, that's not why even at this point. Because we don't want to become like Tarrant County where we have a lot of people infected.
Right.
I agree, it might be worth to wait and see what happens. But I also like what Cleveland had. In my opinion, it was very clear. I looked at Burleson's also, I suppose a little bit more restricted, I felt. But my question is, how are we going to implement that rule if we go ahead and do sheltering?
That's like a $64,000 question. It's, you know, it's going to have to be, you know, somebody turns, somebody in. If you notice a large gathering, you do it. Burleson, in their meeting last night, said that, I guess Ken is on the Tarrant County, they, Tarrant County has a mayor's group, and they get together, and they were part of dealing with, when the county made their decision. And all of the judges, or excuse me, all of the mayors stated that their cities were not enforcing the drive for the essential services. Nobody, nobody's police department was going to go out and stop cars to see, you know, where are you going at this point? So the rest of it just comes to, you know, if somebody sees it, somebody turns them in, police department has to be out and, you know, see somebody going in a store that's supposed to be closed, then that's the possibility. But it, a lot of this is going to be self-enforcement. You know, you're going to, hopefully, that citizens, and that's what this whole deal comes down to, is common sense. You know, and there's going to be a group of people that are going to try and buck the system no matter what. But the majority of the people are going to follow what the rules are, and that's what your county, we're trying to lay out what the rules are going to be. And a majority of the citizens will do that.
No, I agree. I think it needs to be, it shows that it's always the process of infecting people, so we definitely need to do something about it.
Right. Well, I think that we do need to make a statement. I think the guidelines that have been laid forward by the state and the county and so forth are pretty good guidelines, and guidelines can be the key. They're just kind of a general rule of thumb, keeping the gatherings limited. Residential gatherings, suggestion of, you know, there are some large households, but just don't be having parties. Restaurants, do a takeout. All of our restaurants, I'm so proud of our city for stepping up before the mayor even said anything. And they stepped up, and most everyone, immediately, which are a process of self-protection and as well as public protection. I commend every business that we have in our great city. Businesses being closed, we do have the nail salons, things like that. I think those should be closed because they are very high-octane.
They're intense.
They're very intensive. But that being said, I think it should all be a common sense thing. People should hear from us what our suggestions are. And calling in an order, or not calling in an order, but making a statement, semantics. I think if we just make a statement that, you know, the suggestion from the county is such that it's a stay-in-place directive, and that's a, that's a good rule of thumb. If you have to go to work, go to work. You know, if you want to stop by and get dinner on the way home, stop by and get dinner. We have things in place in our society already to help us deal with this pandemic. Just utilize it. Be courteous to others, you know. Keep your distance from people in the grocery store if you do have to go out and buy groceries. Respect the elderly. If they need help, help them, but don't invade them, you know, things like that. So I think it's good for us to have these guidelines. I like Cleveland's guidelines. You know, like you said, the Dollar General and some things, they fall under that convenience store category because the grocery supplies are in there and things like that. As far as, you know, I believe we should make a statement. And sooner than later is my thoughts. If we have to amend it, then we can agree that as a figurehead, either Joe or the city manager, Josh, have the authority to do the amendments as a flowing basis, you know, so that we don't have to re-convene as a court. But if we don't make a statement. But if we don't make a statement and our city's not hearing us make a statement, and, and our city will be, they're asking for answers. And I think that, I think this could help them at least be at ease with, this is the, the guidelines. And if we can all follow this, we'll all get through this and businesses will be better sooner. So.
So Mike, you're, when you say that it's saving, you mean more like a, a document, it's not a resolution? Cause you know, resolutions don't have legal kind of, they're not legally binding, but they are kind of a statement from the city council.
Yes. Something that we can, something that we can make a resolution saying that we are at least abiding by the lowest common denominator, which would be whatever state level or, or whatever government level that has set rules in place. And then we're making a resolution to stay by that.
I think the only challenge, Mike, to kind of be aware, you know, to just kind of remember, I think places in Florida and a lot of the places recently had a lot of that, that mentality. Of, hey, we recommend social distancing, we recommend these type of things. And then what happened last week in spring break, the worst places for me had no requirements. You know, yeah, people didn't care. They just, they just took it on themselves that, hey, we're, we're better than this. And also that's why ordinance per se or, or declaration type, you know, is a little bit more subjective where, has a little bit more tea to it. And maybe it'll cause a few more to think twice. They're going to get the ones that don't care anymore, just going to travel through the stuff. But in the most part, you have to have a little bit of teeth, whatever we decide to do, has to have a little bit of, you know, strength behind it. And not just, hey, please don't do that, because, you know, we, we all know, I mean, and as a high school teacher, she, how many times does she tell kids?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you.
I, I totally understand. We need to do something, but, you know, and it may not be overly restrictive or whatever. But we have to put something out there that says, hey, we know, we're aware this is a, an issue. And then, hey, we want to make sure protect as many of those that can't be protected. Those that are just going to, hey, we put speed limits out there as guidelines and they break the speed line. That is still going to happen. Yeah, we have to have rules that we have, and that's.
Great. I'm pretty much, I would need to see what the judge goes, like, really, really stuff. I believe we need to put safeguards in place. We don't want to wake up next week and have several confirmed cases down here. When we could have prevented. My email, I got Cleveland version, I read the, yeah, I like it. I can get the rest of these. I'll just now get to reading these. I've been reading, Murleson, I like it. Kind of a combination of things right here. Uh, my, my restaurants here, the second problem says, probably the dining groups. I think that would be a great step forward. But, um, I'd like to see what the judge says on all the rumors tomorrow.
Right. Now, here's, here's one. I don't think that'll happen, but if we're, we're well good. You know, there is a risk and there's a chance that the county tomorrow does nothing. The reason why is because two thirds of the counties rule and they don't really need to have any, that much activity and that much, you know, restrictedness is a rule. But yet, when the two largest cities in the county has restrictions, it makes them pause and say, well, they have them, we don't need to do it. So that's where, puts us right back to where we're at. Is okay, if we're going to go off to the county and we're stuck right smack dab in the middle of the two largest cities in the county, we're not any different from Cleveland or Burleson. The fact is, is we all blend together. It's how that is dynamically. We're not out in Venus, we're not out in Rivista. We're not, we're not further out. And then in the county, where yes, they may not need the restrictions. So if the county decides not to be restricted, and then we're stuck here in the middle again. Whereas we're back to right where we're, we're at right now with, if we take no action, if we wait on the county to take action. We can always take action and if the county does something more restrictive or whatever, you know, obviously that's going to, you know, go online.
I, I agree with that and, and I'll reiterate that I didn't say this, but you're right. The, the county is a lot of rural and rural tends to not have rules for the most part. Um, cities are more rule based, um, and that's to keep things under control. And if we don't keep things under control, you're right, we could have, we could have the next outbreak. So at, at minimum, we need to stay with what we currently got in place. I do think that some of the things need to be added, um, as a statement, you know? These can't be done because they're cohesive to large groups or for the people in armed way. Say businesses that have been suggested to be closed.
Those businesses have already been closed by the governor, by, by the state declaration.
Yes.
All right. All we're doing is we're, we're, we're reiterating what the state's already said. All right. The, the hair, the hair things, so on and so forth. Why put an unenforceable law on books? You, you're, okay, fine. You want people to call in and say, hey, my neighbor's having a party over at their house. You know, how many people are going to do that? And by the way, we're now exposing our police officers, our first responders to the possibility of getting the virus. You know, is, is, is that a, we're, 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 we've got two edged sword here. And we've got to be very careful with that. Very careful with that.
Well, I think our citizens don't expect us to do something. I think, you know, you, I, I get your point and I, I'm not disputing any of that. But again, we're between Burleson and Cleveland and our citizens want to say, what, what are you guys, but what are we supposed to be doing? And we need to be helping it out. I think we've got a couple of options here. We can sit there tonight and say, okay, if a judge doesn't say, put in a stay at home order, we can decide, well, that's what we want to do and have one put together. We can say, well, let's see what the judge asks tomorrow. Maybe he doesn't do a stay at home, but maybe he adds additional restrictions. And say, okay, we're good with that. Or as it was, uh, Jerry said, he may not do anything tomorrow. And it's like, okay, do we want to come in then and now add some additional restrictions? Do we want to do, uh, lock in place? I guess, sort of just to play the show of hands, how many people would want to go through a lock in place if the judge doesn't require that tomorrow?
You mean shelter in place?
Shelter in place. So like I said, I don't know. And as of right now, I think we're saying we don't necessarily want to come to a shelter in place tomorrow. But I said, if the judge does that, then we're automatically covered anyway. If he doesn't do anything, how many of us would want to come up and at least come up with some more restrictions or a resolution? As Josh said, and says, hey, this is what we're asking the citizens that Josh moved in. How many would want us to see us do that?
I could go with a resolution.
And I think so, so we probably just.
I do. Most people, if you tell them, like, here's, they're going to listen.
But again, a resolution, again, it's not going, a resolution is not going to stop us.
You can't have a law still, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Peo- people are going to do dumb things. Like go to spring break where they've been told not to go.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't against the law. What happened, what happened when they finally said, no, the beaches are closed and this is against the law? What happened to the beaches? People left the beach.
Right.
Yeah. So, no, if we do pass an ordinance that does, you know, create a declaration that does create issues and it does provide a better safety net for the community. If you're going to just play the silly game and let the county decide for the county and not for our citizens between Burleson and Cleveland, which is the most densest area out there, you're going to just play the silly game and let the county decide that? Sure. But I, I don't think that's a fair way to do it. Considering the circumstances we're in between Cleveland and Burleson, we've got to be somewhere in their mix. If we're not in their mix, it doesn't make any sense at all. Okay? For, our citizens are already confused. You know, they may want to do nothing, they want to do too much. They have differences within, we get that. But if there's no guidelines, we're just waiting on somebody else to make guidelines? How are we legislating this community? We're, we're not doing it. We're, we're just, why have a city council? A city council can't make a decision that impacts the community. We're going to wait on the county or the state to make that decision.
I just think we're setting a precedent that, that down the road could be very detrimental to the city, the county, the state with all these resolutions and, and emergency orders and declarations and stuff going out.
And these aren't going to be in place for the next 20 years.
But we set a precedent. Okay. This time it's, it's.
We have a precedent. It's already been the governor and the county. Hey, we're just trying to handle what we can do with everything.
Exactly. And, 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 and me and, me and my wife, and, and as far as I know, my family and everybody, we're abiding by the guidelines that have been recommended by the federal government, CDC, by the state and by the county. We're, 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 we're doing that. We've chosen to do that. Right? We've, we've already got all these, these things in place. I just think putting a, another law on the books is kind of a moot point. That's, that's just my, my, my opinion. And, and I understand, I, I understand that because of what we don't know about this, it is so dangerous. And that's why we, we want to respond to it, not react. I think the resolution saying, hey, look guys, we've got county guidelines, we've got state guidelines, and we got federal guidelines. And we highly, highly recommend that every one of you follow those.
You know, we say that, but, but most people respond to which guidelines? To cities guidelines. Believe it or not, more people look into the city and say, I mean, we see it with ordinances all the time. They're more, you know, the city says this, this, and this. So they know, they're more tuned into the city as to what the city's expecting of the community as opposed to what the county, definitely not unless the county. I just say maybe a little bit more.
I think in this particular case with, with how widespread and, and how, how involved everybody is and how it's 24/7, 365 and the news cycle and, and all that, I think everybody's getting the message of what they need to be doing. You know, I, I trust our citizens to do the right things. I believe in them. I, I, I really think that, that personal responsibility is very high in our city. That's why all of our restaurants closed their dining and went to the drive-through and the takeout without having to be ordered to do so. They saw it coming. They knew that the possibility was there. Hey, let's get ahead of the curve. Let's figure out how to do it and make it work right.
Yeah, they, they brought themselves into alignment with, with the recommendations that were already like. As a city, we need to align ourselves and take a stand and make a statement in alignment with the state and the, and the local regulations. If we don't make that statement, then I think we're wimping out as a city. We're taking an easy way out so we can get social security, schedule it. If we want to make a statement, we have to make a statement. We have to say that we completely agree with, with these guidelines as set forth by the state or whoever has set these guidelines. And if we don't make that statement, we're falling short of our duties.
Short of creating our own law with the restrictions that, that we want to not class.
Creating our own law, we're, we're agreeing with the laws that are.
So, so a resolution would be effective as opposed to actually doing an ordinance in your mind?
No, resolution. I, I understand what Mike's saying. Mike's referring to a statement, hey, look, we know. Scott, it's a resolution, it's a declaration, it's a law. If, if we're going to go there, we're going to go there. Cause that's the only way to, to be protected. And I think that we have to decide, I think we take the next few minutes and look, you know, between Cleveland and Burleson, is there a fine line in between these? We have to go somewhere in that, in line with those to be in line with our community. Our community is not just Joshua. Our community extends beyond to Cleveland and Burleson, okay? And then the county, and then the state. I mean, it does. And right now, again, we have a high risk. Again, we didn't take the action the other night, okay, because we thought more action would be taken. It didn't happen. They did on local levels, which is what the government has said to do. The president's left it up to the states, which has left it up to the counties, which has left it up to the local communities. That's where we're at. They aren't taking as much action because they're letting each individual, you know, government decide what action they're going to take. Some of them were extremely restricted. We get that. But looking at these here, these aren't the end of the world type actions. Just because they impede somebody's feelings or personal right, maybe for a pause of a couple of weeks, what we're talking about. You know, hey, could this be off or not? We don't know. But like Robert said earlier, you know, what was it if we don't take the action? You know?
Right.
Anyway, right?
Italy took the action. They, they did a complete lockdown in, in, in Italy. They still have not reached a peak.
Too little, too late.
Okay.
We're ahead of the game, not behind the game.
Correct. And, and again, by being ahead of the game the way, the way we are, we already have the restrictions in place. No, not, not near.
I, what, go to Scott, to your point though, the governor sat there and said, here's the things that I'm telling you need to do. He also said, Texas is a big state. So I'm not going to tell the entire state to do this because very well, some of the South Texas, other areas, it's not going to apply. He said, I'm going to leave that up to the local authorities. So then we have the county come in. All right. Tarrant County, Dallas County, the big counties, all of the big counties are putting these ordinances in place. You take Johnson County, yeah, we're on that edge. See, we've got two big cities, which we're right in the middle, and then you've got a lot of rural. So part of that really wouldn't apply to some of those rural districts, but it applies to us. So if you're okay with the governor saying, hey, do this and this, and then decide for yourself for this, and then you're okay with the county saying, okay, you got to do this, but you're about to decide for yourself depending on where you live, that's what we're doing. Take it to the next step.
I didn't say, I was okay with what the governor said. I just said, he's already said it, it's already happened.
Well, the governor, I mean, yesterday, the governor, I mean, yesterday, in regards to driving to his, when he was giving his briefing, okay? Seeing how many people are on the road, okay, that they're not taking in the cost, what the government's already asked them to. And, and so he's in a position already at a state level is the last line of defense to do that. He can't, he doesn't want to go there yet. He's counting on us to be the smarter, you know, legislators there of deciding that, hey, in these pockets, we've got to control these more aggressive pockets. And then maybe for the greater good of the rest of them, that's where that comes into play.
I have one, one, one question. What kind of citizen input have we gotten towards doing this?
You go read Facebook, there's a lot of them asking, what, what is Josh, is it, Burleson went to this, is that what we're doing? You know, they're asking, what are we going to be doing? And I've seen people saying, why aren't we going to the slave class?
Some of the best ones I saw was that, there's Joshua again, last ones to act.
Yes.
I saw that several times out there, you know, and, and even from some of the more, would I would say, right side or conservative side, making those comments, I was real impressed and, you know, kind of, oh, that's kind of where you come from. But not, not to mention a lot of names there, but it's, it's one of those things that it's out there. If we're wanting to see some action from the council to decide, hey, wait, we need to help them go.
One thing I've heard on the Facebook and Twitter is consistency. We've got to be consistent. Cause people say, you know, I work in Cleveland, they have their rules and we've got, can I go to the store in Burleson? I don't know. I think my recommendation would be that the next step is to have an ordinance or a proclamation.
Declaration.
Uh, declaration, similar, but customized to Joshua, similar to Cleveland. With the shelter in place order to be a step after that, if it's the needed rules.
I'm 100% agree with that. I go to the, the Cleveland works, and then do the, the next step, you know, by the last, you know, maybe next week or maybe we don't even have to go to, it would be a shelter in place. But that was the thing I liked about the Cleveland. I think they were very clear in that they didn't say essential sources. They said, hey, you know, here's the ones we're going to shut down, which is the ones basically the governor and the county shut down. Uh, he did, our attorney said, just do some more, but I think they might have been covered because I noticed that the judge said arcades. And that was probably, he, uh, Terry thought that maybe that was stepping out of his closer, some of the walls and some of the other stuff. But if we can do that, and I like what he said, he devised what convenience stores need to do, he devised what grocery stores need to do. Uh, you know, we've got everything down at the 10, that's it, you know, but didn't, didn't have anything in here. If you want to go down to Big Ben, go down to Big Ben right there. Uh, living in Burleson, you can't, according to their doctors.
I would also say that we look at these others.
I would also say that we're, 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 though, that we look at these others, because many of them have some very good, uh, recommendations.
Right.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the addendums of all of them were good, very good. I think, you know, I hate that we had to do it, but you know, you might have to put some limits on the store. I think if we would give the supply chains the time and not everybody go for everything, this thing would clear up in about a week or so as far as being able to buy something. But everybody's scared that there's not gonna be anymore, and when the demand gets the size it is now, you know, this turn and switch, all of a sudden, that's how much you get delivered. You gotta go all the way back to that poor chicken, you know, that's laying in the bins, and, and it's like, no, it's, it's gonna take a while, and if everybody just buy what they need for the next week or so, I think we'll be able to set it there.
My idea of grocery is like you got two eighteen-year-old kids at house. Buy enough at last minute, you know, and let them restock it.
Well, how about we do this then? You know, we, we wait to see what the judge is gonna do. I mean, he may put a stay-in-place order, and that's experiment all anyway. Get to work on something, get with Terry. And I know it's, part of this is gonna depend on what the judge says tomorrow. If he cleans up some of it, then I think Terry might have some to work. Right now, Terry doesn't have anything to work with to get us to Cleveland. But I think if, his main concern was, it's just the way the judge sort of treat. So if the judge clear, clarifies that stuff up, have Terry work on an ordinance for us that's similar to that, and I would say, uh, you know, everybody read these a little bit more, if you see something, one of the others you wanna add, get it to Josh, and then maybe, uh, I don't know, we need to have something tomorrow, maybe Monday. If the judge doesn't do anything any differently, I, I'm may, I'm a hundred percent sure he's gonna clarify the misnumbers in there. So I think that'll get us to where we could move to the next step then. And then maybe if he doesn't put something in place that we can do, but maybe we get together Monday, everybody send their information to Josh, saying, okay, here's the things I think we need to see in there, and especially like you said, I love you, dude. I think all, I didn't see any bad, everybody did a good job. No recommendations? Yep.
Alex, is that a chat that, that someone had a question?
Let me see here. He said lockdown.
There's one, there's one. There's, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, but here's the thing, okay? As fluid as this is, that thinking that, you know, four days of no action is, you know, doesn't make any difference, well, it really does. Four days does, does make difference. And that's, that's what I'm hearing, you know, from the judge, the idea that, hey, we're just gonna wait on the county, and if they don't do something, we're gonna go wait another weekend of activity, then go to Monday, for, for maybe a Tuesday or Wednesday order, you know, we're almost a week out.
You know, the problem is, we can't do anything right now, it's a week the judge has ordered. So I mean, it's, we're at our ends, what we can do.
Do we know how long it will take once we find out what the judge does tomorrow for Terry to get an ordinance drafted?
Josh, do you have any idea?
No, I think there are people listening in right now who are asking.
Most of these cities, once they've made a statement, it goes into effect.
Well, some of them have done it already. You know, like Burleson, yesterday, they made it effective midnight last night. Most of them have been doing it for the next night, because you really do need to get the business having prepared. I think if you get something today, you might have midnight the next night, just, you know, we're shutting somebody down, at least I feel like going to their office, you know? So it was like, oh.
I mean, realistically, it's hard. Reading is, it's not like we're actually gonna shut any of our businesses down that haven't already called in. But so, once again, I say, we're just aligning ourselves and making the, the official statement and the declaration that this is what we decided. And in doing so, I don't think we're actually shutting anyone down. We're just making a statement so that people can look to us and say, thank you for at least drawing the line. And then if the stay-in-place order comes down from the judge, and, and that has to go into effect, it, it does go into effect, but we've at least started the process and drawn the line. Because if we don't, like Terry said, we're just kinda out no land between two cities. And we do have people asking us to make this statement. Everybody knows it's hard. Nobody really wants to do it. But I think we've all already decided, I'm willing to do it for a couple of weeks if it's gonna end up saving lives in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, here's the thing that, I mean, why did we have this meeting tonight? If, if, if the whole idea was we're, we were gonna wait on the judge, we're gonna wait till tomorrow?
No, that was, okay, what, the whole reason to be in that was Burleson went to lock in place last night. I assumed that that's what Cleveland was gonna do, and so I thought, okay, we need to get in here, I thought we were gonna make that decision today, and that we needed to get in here and do basically the same thing. That's not what they're gonna do. So now, we got the person on the right's doing this, the person on the left, you know, we gotta decide, are we gonna do what Burleson did, or are we gonna do what Cleveland did?
And that's a decision we're gonna make.
I, I agree. I agree with Jerry, that waiting four days under the circumstances is, is ridiculous. You know, depending if we can get an answer from Terry as to how quickly.
I'm sure you can, I'm sorry, I'm sure you can get done, call it by the base mark.
Okay. You know, call, call another meeting Saturday, call it Sunday, yeah, call it as soon as we can get the ordinance put together and at least looked at to, if, if that's what we're gonna do for him, do, do an ordinance, then let's get it done and get it done as quickly as possible. And I'm, I'm available, I'll make myself available to be at, at whatever emergency meetings declared. I think all of us here would, that's how much we care about our city. So.
Let's keep our coronavirus victims at zero in Joshua and do the shelter in place. While waiting till later, while waiting till we have a case to take action, let's handle it.
Is it safe when these, we've done it, so it wouldn't come in over in this system?
And just, just so you guys know, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, they're talking, they have to do a lot of conversation with Terry on how this is gonna get worded. We make it so, again, from Terry's, uh, opinion, it's either a shelter in place or nothing, uh, because anything else, he, he was the adoptee, would already be covered by the county and state declarations.
If they were, if the county was to have an action.
No, as of right now.
As of right now.
So really, according to Terry, is really the only thing we could do that would be what the state and county haven't already done is a shelter in place.
And that would have to be done under an emergency declaration since we don't have an ordinance in front of us.
Correct. Yeah, right. So just to keep that in mind, there may have, there'll be lots of back and forths where you guys, uh, wanna make a statement or pass an ordinance that's not a shelter in place, but still is kind of redundant, you know, in some way, you know, the county and state or not, you have to supply the back and forth to what you guys want in the ordinance to carry out.
But I think that, I think a shelter in place declaration is really the, the direction I would prefer, yeah.
Um, I agree, and, and because shelter in place is, is the term used for adhering to these guidelines. It's just a term. It's not saying lock yourself in the, in the house and don't poke your head out the window. It's do your yard work, you know, keep doing your, keep living your life, cook your, grill, grill your food, uh, go to the store, get your groceries, keep, go home, and keep your distance, you know? Don't, uh, don't have wild parties and, and things like that. But it's, it's just shelter in place saying that, hey, go to your home zone and, and be safe, follow these, follow the guidelines of washing your hands, please wash your hands, um, and things like that.
And just, just, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I mean, you guys wish something to do in terms of, if y'all send this stuff in terms of wording that y'all wanted to put in there, that y'all don't want to do a shelter in place, but that was my point, is I'm not specifically, that is in my opinion that it's in there to one or the other, uh, but y'all, y'all have lots of no ground, then it really may take us a little while, but...
Well, can you ask Terry if we don't went to a shelter in place to use Cleveland's rules, would that work if we do that?
I can ask.
Oh, Terry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good, uh, what was the question? I, I, I heard earlier that how long would it take to, to either draft a declaration for the mayor to sign or for an ordinance if the county judge changes something tomorrow? I mean, we could have, I could have that done tomorrow. I mean, I, it, it wouldn't be difficult to do. Uh, if we need to call an emergency meeting, we just need to have an agenda posted at one hour's notice, because I mean, clearly this qualifies as an emergency.
Hey, the question is, if we went to a shelter in place, if we do something that was in line with what Cleveland did, as long as we didn't, uh, go against what it was that you got an issue with with the judge and Cleveland or Burleson?
You mean Burleson?
No, I'm saying Cleveland. You know, I'm saying do a shelter in place, put that, uh, garbage in there, but then when it got down to following the rules, you know, what they put in there was going something more similar to, to what Cleveland did.
Well, if, if, there, there are a couple of ways we can approach this. One is the mayor can enter a declaration doing anything at any time. It's only good for seven days. So we could, we could, we can have the mayor, you know, uh, 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 sign a declaration tomorrow, whenever, it could be effective whatever time you wanted it to be mayor, and then call a meeting, uh, for, uh, sometime in that seven-day period and adopt an ordinance. I mean, again, if, uh, if, if the county judge does a shelter in place, there's probably no need to do much of anything because that would be about the most we would be able to do anyway, or if the governor did something.
Right. What you're saying is, I could go ahead and declare a shelter in place, it's not necessarily an ordinance with all this garbage that we've got here, and then in the next seven days, we could actually work on the ordinance that we wanted to have, but what we've done is gone to the shelter in place as of tomorrow.
Uh, uh, right. Now, I didn't read the, I didn't read Cleveland's as a shelter in place, I've read Burleson's.
It's not, it's not.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I was just saying, I, I just like, to me, the Cleveland one was cleaner and was easier to read, but add the shelter in place to that. In other words, we put that paragraph in there, and then, you know, uh, Cleveland sort of defined what grocery stores should do, what convenience stores should be, what it means when we're under this particular scenario that we're under now, it sort of defines what was going on in each of the different types of stores. And just, it made it really clear, and it said, these stores are gonna be closed, everything else is open, but here's what you have to do, uh, in that particular situation. You gotta do the social distancing, uh, you gotta have ten people or less, and that type of information.
I mean, yeah, what a couple, like what Dallas County did when they ended, and, uh, on Sunday afternoon or Sunday evening when they did the shelter in place order by the county judge, they kinda came up with, uh, a list of, well, what does this mean, and try to answer those questions as well, so that there was some understanding. Because we have, excuse me, we have essential, non-essential businesses, and that, you know, there, there are obviously gonna be a lot of questions about that, and I will say that in the last week, with all that's gone on here in the state of Texas, I mean, there, there's, I mean, the, the shelter in place orders are fairly, fairly similar. There, there might be one or two exceptions, but like, for example, what Dallas County has done, and Denton County, Kaufman, Rockwall, Tarrant, are all fairly similar word, similarly worded, uh, uh, declarations by the county judges and then declarations by the mayors.
Right.
And, and again, once, but, but the, I, I think the reason why the law has the mayor doing something is you can do that quickly, is, and they just put the seven-day, uh, timeline on it. It can be, it can be extended in additional seven-day increments, but there's also nothing that would prohibit the, the council from getting together and say, yeah, we don't wanna have to keep doing this in seven-day increments, let's do an ordinance. And one of the things, uh, had we gone to, say, a shelter in place tonight, be, make it, make it effective until, until the day after the April council meeting, so we don't have to have council continually meeting or, or the mayor continually signing an, an extension of the declaration, just put it in place for several week periods of the next council meeting, see where we are. Now, again, if, if we have a, if we have an ordinance in place, if we have a, a mayoral declaration in place, it can all, all, always be ended. If the mayor, the mayor could end it on his own on the declaration, if we do an ordinance, we just call a special council meeting to, to, uh, terminate that ordinance or repeal that ordinance. I mean, I, I'd like to think that by mid-April, we'll have more, more definition on what's going on with, with the virus itself, but who knows, that we, we may not. I would just not wanna have the council keep meeting every seven days to, to make a decision.
And I'm not asking that. I guess the part that I'm seeing that there may be a concern with, maybe there not, is, uh, in the Cleveland one, there weren't a lot of definitions and definitions of essential services and all of that. They were pretty satisfied. In regardless, they got all this in there for essential businesses and, and I don't know whether that's what we're wanting to adopt that, or make them, or maybe, you know, we wanna do something that's more in line with what we think we've worked in Joshua. So that's the part I'm saying, I don't know whether we can prove that tonight, but if we could do the, you know, the, the stay at home, and then, you know, work on the definitions. But I think that's where the ambiguity comes from, that I've seen from Burleson and here is, I don't know what that means. Can I go do this, or can I not do this? And it comes down, I think, are definitions being very clear.
Well, I mean, yeah, all the cities that have, uh, shelter in place, uh, either ordinances or declarations, um, tend to have a, have a definitional section to help explain it. Um, yeah, I mean, we could do a fact sheet or something like that to help explain it as well. I mean, because you don't, I mean, it's hard to come and come up with one that includes every possible business, what's, what's essential, what's not essential. Uh, and that's, that's what, uh, you know, that's what a couple of counties have tried to do in terms of putting out information and say, here's how we're gonna enforce this, or here's how, here's what this means. For example, uh, there was an issue that came up with, you know, with gun stores. Are they, are they essential, are they non-essential? And so some counties are amending their, their definitions to include that, or some that, they've also asked the governor for it, for an explanation. Engineers have asked, are we performing an essential, you know, essential service or not? Are engineers included? We could expand those definitions to, to try to answer as many of those as we could to make it a little, little more clearer, and of course, it can always be amended, um, you know, always be amended if we have to. That's not a problem either.
Well, yes, my idea was sort of the other way. I think these definitions are very broad, and really the businesses that we have in town aren't very broad. We don't, you know, we don't have the big box stores, we don't have all the stuff that all these definitions are trying to cover and sort of muddy up the water a little bit. We're pretty straightforward, you know? We've got a lot of mom and pop, we got some, you know, franchises, but we don't have best pies and things like that, and a lot of these are trying to figure out how that gets figured into the equation. So that's what I was trying to think about, maybe a little bit less on the definition of board, just because we don't have, we're not trying to cover as many bases as Burleson and Cleveland were.
So, let, let me ask then, what, tonight, do you want to do anything tonight, or do you wanna wait to see? I want to, just the next step. Is the next step to wait, see what the county judge does tomorrow, and then mayor work with you on, on a declaration of some sort? If, if something is done that we need to do, and then have a council meeting maybe a little bit later to address the issue? You, you know, if we need, if we need council action?
Hey, Terry, I think the issue we have there, we talked about that, is the, is the idea that if the county doesn't do anything tomorrow and take much further action, and we're just, we're another week into it, we're four, five, six days down the road, and, you know, how much more damage can be done?
Well, I think that's, and sorry, I think that's the point about maybe do the declaration as kind of a place order to give us time to work on.
Now, do the ordinance.
So, so we, so if Terry literally, you know, decides to do this, he'd be acting tomorrow. And so whoever comes out of the county isn't, you know, any further restrictions or, or further clarification, and Joe can go ahead and act, put something in place tomorrow that gives us seven days to work on, or whatever.
What's that declaration gonna look like? What action, you know?
Well, it sounds like me, what it would be Cleveland with the shelter in place based on what Joe said.
Right.
But, yeah, and we could do a declaration that would state pretty much the same thing as the ordinance would, but it wouldn't be an actual ordinance.
Not yet, right.
Right. And then if, if in the next week, county does say something that contradicts it or adds to it, then we feel like we need to make an ordinance.
But if I do the mayor's deal, if the county comes out tomorrow, you know, let's say we get all ours, we're gonna do it at ten o'clock tomorrow, and at two o'clock, he comes out and stays in place, then I can just immediately cancel the order that I had and run them stay in place already.
Yeah, but let us say all reasons, they conflict, I think, saving county declarations of county one supersede, right? So if they, if we, Joe does something in the morning, the county comes out later, whatever, they're not gonna, it's... So if they, if we judge us something in the morning, you can't even go later with whatever they cannot with, it's more restricted than ours is. I mean, it's a conspiracy, ours is the price.
So, so if we make a declaration and, and give our basic premise, and in seven days, we need an ordinance, we still have time to call an emergency meeting and draw up an ordinance. Or we can just extend it seven more days, or you can handle extending that. Uh, just, just so we're all clear, there is no council approval of the emergency declaration. That is strictly on the mayor's back. And, and he, he issues it, he can extend it. Now, we as a council can support him in that, if, if that's, if that's his decision. And we, we as a council can, can support that decision. But he can do this interlaced, he does not need us to make this declaration or to extend it. But we're here to help him with this decision. Exactly, that's, that's what will happen is the discussion. That's, that's why, that's why we're here, that's why we're having the discussion.
So is everybody okay with that? I'll make the declaration in the morning to go to a stay in place, similar to the Cleveland one. And like I said, Terry, just work the magic. Uh, go with those restrictions for right now, and if we need to change those within seven days, uh, we can come up with an ordinance that sort of clarifies some things and call another special meeting.
Let, let me make sure I understand, then, wha- what time is it, is the commissioners meeting tomorrow?
I think it's at eleven.
Okay. And we want to kind of see what happens there, correct?
Uh, I'm probably about ninety percent sure he's not going to do a stay in place. So I think we probably ought to go ahead and get our ducks lined up and go ahead and do it. And whatever you've got that information for us, if that's at ten o'clock, we'll do it then. Or if it's three o'clock, then we'll know what becomes of it.
So we, if we do a stay in place, you wanted, basically, you have a stay in place kind of model after what Cleveland has? And when do you want, when would you want to have that effective? I mean, generally speaking, what I'm seeing is about twenty-four hours or that.
I would say Saturday midnight.
Like Saturday at midnight type thing?
Friday midnight, absolutely.
Well, it's typical, you're going to do something, and that gives us an opportunity, you got a day, you're not having to make a decision in a couple of hours. Well, not what we're having to do that week. If we make it for Saturday at midnight, at least everybody's got to check, oh, okay, I need to do this in order to make those requirements. I may want to leave it down, I'm going to leave it down. All right, is everybody on board with that? Do we need to make this fit? What I know about, no, because I'm going to actually do the declaration. So what I'm going to do is, for, I'll make a declaration based on what Cleveland has. Then if anybody got anything they want to add, change, or whatever, we'll work on the ordinance. If the judge does not go to a stay in place tomorrow, then maybe we can meet next Thursday night or one night next week, get the ordinance in place exactly like we want it, and then that way we can put a time limit on it. But we could also suspend that at any time too. Like I said, Terry, I understand, we don't need to do any action tonight, as long as I'm doing that declaration tomorrow.
Correct, correct.
There's no action we can take, the, the action we're going to take on the ordinance that we got.
Right, right. Okay, thanks to Terry.
Thank you.
All right, so anybody have any questions then on what we're going to do? I'm going to, as soon as Terry has it ready, we'll make the declaration at that point in time. Back to midnight Saturday, uh, judge ordinance has anything that overrules ours, that'll take place. But otherwise, uh, we're good to go with a stay in place. And over the next seven days, everybody read all these ordinances, see something, think it's being ours, then we can do that. We'll get together next week and actually put it into an ordinance. Everybody good? Where are you going to put a definition in there for stay in place? I think that, it's in one of these, and I think the one Terry's even got, or has a definition for that. It's, it's wherever your legal residency is, and that kind of, that's not in Cleveland. Well, because they will have a stay, they're not doing a stay in place, that's what, that's all. They have licenses, they need to put a section out there. Or defining what can be stayed in place, actually makes.
Exactly, yes.
So we're doing a combination, that's good. We got Berlison and Cleveland, we're combining them together to come up with Joshua. So ours is different from Berlison's, and it's different from Cleveland's.
Just please, a little more clear, it's under, well understood.
Yes.
Keep it simple.
All right, well, I appreciate everybody being here tonight, and I'll do the declaration in the morning as soon as it's ready. So go from there. Thank y'all. Thank everybody that was in attendance on our suit. Hopefully that worked out well. If you have any comments, please send them to us, and, uh, we'll try to make it better next time. Thank you, we're adjourned.
See y'all later, bye-bye.
Bye, thanks, Terry. Thank you, everybody.